Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the September 14, 2023 Agenda Setting Conference. At this time, I will call on Vice Chairman Adams for the invocation and quiz.
No, wait a second. I got to get up. I got to get up. Okay.
Good afternoon, Father. We come again to the throne. Father, we just say thank you, thank you for this wonderful day that you've given us. Thank you for all of us that are in this room. Lord, I ask you to touch our hearts that we be doing everything in decent and in order as you've commanded us to do. Father, we'd ask you to bless all of the people that are in this county, our citizens, our staff. Father, we'd ask you to look after each one of us, and as we leave this place, we'd ask you to encamp your angels around us to make sure that we return to our loved ones safe and secure. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we want to make sure that we keep in prayer the officer that was hit, struck by a vehicle. We want to make sure that we keep him remaining in our prayers. At this time, we will move on to our consideration of our agenda items.
No approval of the agenda.
Oh, we haven't approved it yet. I'm sorry. We will approve the agenda.
Second.
The manager.
Manager Greer, do you have any?
No changes to the agenda, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented. Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. We will move on to consideration of agenda items.
The first agenda item is the Art Committee recommendations. We have some small business recommendations and some follow-up recommendations from the committee meeting last week. Ty Vault, Chief of Staff, will do the presentation to go over the committee recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners. The American Rescue Plan Committee met Tuesday, September 5th. Now, before you today present their recommendations, as you are aware, the county reopened the application phase for the Small Business Economic Assistance Program and accepted applications from July 1st through July 31st. We received a total of 38 unique applications with a total allocation request of $1.6 million. Staff reviewed these submittals and ultimately recommended to the ARP Committee 21 businesses with a combined recommended award of $811,118. And that's part of a second recommendation on, based on the, on your June 19, 2023 meeting, the Board of Commissioners approved revisions to Policy Number 10-2.9, which is the policy for this program. And you will recall that we implemented elements of the U.S. Treasury's final rule and frankly, the lessons that we've learned over the last two plus two, almost two years. During Phase Two reopening, we also received requests from businesses that received funding under Phase One of this program. Ultimately, after reviewing these requests, staff made recommendations to increase the allocations for 15 businesses by a total of $219,623. I will note that pending the approval of these recommendations, staff will bring a budget order amendment to transfer unassigned administrative funds to cover the cost of these recommendations. However, there are businesses who received funding under Phase One of this program who have yet or not yet drawn down any funds, and staff has started to reach out to them to gauge their intentions and their willingness to continue in the program. Funds not utilized by Phase One businesses will ultimately be utilized to offset the cost of the Phase Two recommendations. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Are there any questions, Commissioner Fairclough?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Assuming all of these funds are drawn down, does this, does this exhaust all the funds that are available for that project, or will there be a third possible?
So originally with this program, the original budget was $3.5 million. At the conclusion of the awards for Phase One, we reduced it by the amount of the awards, which was $1.8 million. And so that's Phase One. Based on some businesses who have not drawn down funds, there's currently somewhere in the ballpark of about $400,000. And so, but we need to go through that and kind of vet that through to see if there's any folks who are still maybe struggling, who are trying to draw down, just have not done it yet. But if there's a difference, that's the thing at which we'll probably need some funding from that, we recommend pooling it from, we have unallocated funds in our administrative fund, about $1.8 million there, that we can move over to cover the rest of that cost. But we wanted to wait until we got to this phase, so we weren't, you know, playing whack-a-mole, basically, trying to set the budget correctly.
Well, thank you, kind of answered my question, but will, will there be money left over after this phase?
After this phase?
Yes. Does this, does this exhausted if everybody pulls down what they've been authorized?
For the small business program, yes, sir.
Okay. That's Mr. Greer.
Sorry about that.
Any other questions? At this time, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the Phase One, Phase Two funding to do the budget revision and afford to go to the consent agenda for the 18th.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Intergovernmental Support Agreement with Fort Liberty for Animal Services. We have an agreement that we reached with them regarding the animal services and picking up animals for the Fort Liberty. Sally Hoot, ACM Assistant County Manager, will go over the contract and ask any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. In 2016, Cumberland County entered into that Intergovernmental Support Agreement with Fort Bragg to provide the animal control services. And today, Animal Services Director Elaine Smith and I are bringing forth a revised agreement with Fort Liberty in the county. The changes include increased charges for services rendered by the county, animal services invoiced, invoices to post monthly for those services. And revisions also include some, the post seeking more detailed information with those monthly invoices related to call logs and stray and owner surrendered animals. So the charges, the increases include productive dispatches increasing from $309 to $639 per animal, nonproductive dispatches increasing from $96 to $105. Domestic strays or surrendered animals will be brought to, that are brought to the shelter, that cost will increase from $309 to $534. And the kennel fee per day is increasing from $34 to $45. The agreement that you have in your agenda packet has been reviewed by County Attorney's Office, and the Garrison Commander has signed the agreement. So we're asking for your approval today and moving it forward to the September 18th consent agenda.
Are there any questions? I'm sorry, thank you.
Move to approve the Intergovernmental Support Agreement between the county and Fort Liberty for Animal Services, place it on the consent agenda for September 18th.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item 2C. Thank you very much.
Item 2C is the bid award for the production drive extension and site preparation for the San Hill Rose Industrial Site. Jermaine Walker, Director of Engineering and Infrastructure, will go over this. And also he will do Item D, National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System Recertification also.
Good afternoon, Mr. Walker.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Madam Chair. So if I could just orient you to, to the site map. So this is the area where we're looking to do a project, which is site prep, clearing, rating, in order for, if they had built Cumberland Economic Development, to the show base of this property. To the, to the west, because it's oriented toward, this is a little market distribution center here, and up in this area here to the north, this is, so what we're looking to do is extend production drive to the eastern portion of this property, which will allow prospective investors to come in, drive the property, and be able to actually visualize what type of facility they can put in, put in that area. So this project was solicited in May 2023. We closed the solicitation June 5th, and Barbara Brothers Construction Incorporated submitted the lowest responsible, responsible bid at roughly $1.1 million. All of the, the relevant proposals and bid tabs are attached, and this project is fully funded from a grant from the Golden Leaf Foundation. And what we're requesting is that you approve the bid and move this forward to September 18th, regular meeting as part of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the bid award for the production draft extension and the San Hills Industrial Site preparation to Barbara Brothers Construction as the lowest responsible bid.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
The next is...
It'll be quick. No, not too, not too. I won't talk about you. I'm all like, talking to you too over here.
It's okay if you have a bit of great, it'll be awesome.
But understanding, yes, sir.
No.
So this item, the county participates in the National Flood Insurance Program and the Community Rating System. And what this does is it allows the county's residents to receive discount on their annual flood insurance premiums. Currently, the county has a class rating of eight, which qualifies the residents to receive a 10% discount. And part of our annual recertification is to conduct the reporting, but then also present this before, this report before the governing board for approval. And so what we're asking is that the board accept this report and it should be received and move forward to the September 18th Board of Commissioners meeting as a consent item.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Are there any questions? I will entertain a motion at this time.
Madam Chair, I would recommend and move that proposed sections, proposed actions be placed on September 18, 2023 Board of Commissioners presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just the motion and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Up next, we have the update to the Community Transportation Program Drug and Alcohol Policy. Hank Graham, Pham Po, Executive Director, will do the presentation. And the adjustments to the policy are required by the Federal Transportation Administration.
Thank you. He has Items E and F.
E and F, yes.
E and F, okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. To summarize very quickly and briefly, this amendment to the existing Community Transportation for Cumberland County Drug and Alcohol Policy is to incorporate primarily the inclusion of urine and oral testing for drug use and alcohol use for all of our contracted operators that we contract with to provide transportation services for the Community Transportation Program. All of the necessary support documentation is included. The actual policy itself has been updated to incorporate that inclusion of both urine and oral testing throughout the document. And there's an addendum that is required to be sent to the Federal Transit Administration based on the board's decision. We ask that the item be placed, approved, and amended, and be placed on the September 18th consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? I will entertain a motion at this time.
Madam Chair, I recommend that staff make the probable actions below be placed on the September 18, 2023 Board of Commissioners Agenda as a consent item, approve the drug and alcohol policy agenda, and authorize the board and Chair to sign again.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. And go to the next, please.
So the next item, it's a submission, it is basically just a submission of our fiscal year 2025 application for all of our Community Transportation Planning Grant Funding Programs. It is the application for FY 2025. So as the fiscal year goes on, we will be bringing various component parts for each one of these grant-funded programs before the commission for actual implementation for the various grant programs themselves. You can see inside the agenda package, we are required to hold a public hearing each year for this application package. And you can see there's a table that shows the detailed breakdown of all of the various transit funding, grant programs and allocations that we receive, or will receive with the submission of this FY 2025 grant application.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Are you no questions? Yeah, I will, I'll turn to motion at this time.
Madam Chair, I recommend that staff request the Board of County Commissioners for the February hearing for the FY 255311 grant application, September 18, 2023 regular meeting. And also the staff's request the board approve the submission of the FY 25 projects for the Community Transportation Program, 5310, also 5307, ROAP grant applications to NC DOT after September 18, 2023, regular meeting as a consent agenda item.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Well, I got a question.
I have a question.
I got a question.
I approve.
First.
Commissioner Council.
We are not having, we're not having the public hearing today.
No.
All right. I got mixed up.
Well, then you can't put this on the consent agenda, because you got to have the public hearing before, because we have the consent agenda before we do items of business. So you got to have, this is where I'm, this is only my whole thing, is you, we can approve that, but you got to have the public hearing before you can actually, so it can't go on the consent agenda, is all I'm saying. It has to be an item of business below the consent, below the public hearing. So when we put it on the agenda, public hearing and then approval after that. So, so you can't put it on the consent agenda.
Manager Greer?
Yes. And probably in the future, we'll break it up into two separate agenda items, but you had a ROAP, the 5307, and the five, and the 5310, that could be regular consent items. And then the public hearing part of it for 50, only the public hearing is required for Program 5311. So we probably in the future will break it up, so 5311 stays separate for the public hearing.
Okay.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
She made the motion, so I was already made the second, I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
We just change it with the change on the...
Unanimous.
That just changes the item of business.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, well now move on. Manager Greer?
Back in June, with the service, Item G, Service Agreement with HDR Engineering of the Carolinas for Hydrogeological Services. Back in June, we actually brought this forward and you approved it, but we're bringing the contract. Amanda Beta, General Manager for Natural Resources, will, will go over this item and present it and answer any questions that you have. She also will present Item H, J, and K also.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So we are pleased to present today for your consideration as a consent agenda item, an agreement with HDR Engineering for Hydrogeological Services that will focus on Graves Creek Phase One, which will focus on serving the schools with water from wells. And so this contract includes their services to identify the potential well lots, to assist with the specifications for the test well development, and to perform the well construction And so the Public Utilities Division, myself and county management recommend that the proposed actions be placed on the Board of Commissioners' agenda and the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District Governing Board as a consent item to approve this service agreement that has been audited and determined to be legally sufficient.
Thank you. Any questions?
So move, Madam Chair.
Hold on. I think everybody knows I'm not in any grievance with this, with this, not the process, but this whole deep well water thing, I'm not in agreement with. So...
Just the motion, just don't put it on the consent agenda. It just goes to item of business.
Yes, sir.
So Marsha, if you make your motion.
Yeah, just make your motion and then, so does that mean we're going to go through?
Yep, each one of them, because we're going to approve all of them. You just voted no, evidently.
Yes.
There you go.
I'd move to approve it, and I would add the commentary, if somebody would second it.
I second.
I would just add the commentary that this, this is probably the quickest way to get anything done. And certainly, you know, we would like to have a better solution, and we could still look for a better solution in the future.
It's the quickest way to get what done?
To get some water that's clean. It's, it's down there if we can go get it, but you know, if you, if you try to get, if you try to get it out of the river, that's, that's a whole different ballgame, and we require a lot, it'll take, it'll put the project off a long time. Anyway, I understand your objection and so forth. Anyway, I think, I think if we approve these things now, we get something done.
This is just a study to see. Right?
Well, I mean, we got to have a study before we can do it.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not even, I'm not even, I'm not even comfortable with the study to see. I had one resident, one citizen reach out to me in just his home alone to do the deep well, to get deep well water, whatever the case may be, it was $30,000.
No, he's not paying for it. We're paying for it.
No, no, he had, no, he's, he, this is before we started this.
Right.
It would cost him $30,000. So, and that's one house.
Probably going to cost him that anyway, even a bit of public water.
I understand.
Because it's only going to go to the roadside. That's all. And... Tap on. Yeah, it's a tap, it's a tap on. He must, he must live far off.
I don't, he was, he, he called me and wanted to know about what the county could do. We weren't in, we're not in this process yet, but I'll, there's a motion on the floor, and I think it was second.
All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Fairclough, Commissioner Council, Commissioner Adams, and Commissioner Keaton. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Stewart.
I'll keep studying why between now and then.
There you go.
And see if something changes. I don't know that it will change, but I will keep doing my homework.
What I tell you is that the PWC water is no better.
Absolutely.
It's got, and so there has to be an alternative if we're talking about bringing water. And we all around this table know that PWC doesn't want to bring water down to the bottom part of Graves Creek. It's just, let's be honest, they just want to bring it to the schools, which is the most, and it's not in our best interest to do that, because that's the most profitable part of this system. So we need to move on, and if we're going to do some water down there, this is the, you know, the best route to go. And I understand your, your hesitance with that, but I think that those folk at NC State, you know, we, we do that right there. We know what we doing.
Well, and then, Commissioner Fairclough, the quickest way to get water down there, I don't know how long this study is going to take, and then I don't know how long it's going to do it. Although, we've been working on this for how long? Years.
Twenty years.
Twenty, yeah, they've been twenty years.
They got ran out of there, so ask them.
The Safe Water Task Force.
That was 2010. The Safe Water Task Force was initiated before I became a commissioner in 2008.
So it's been a long time. So I, I do wish, Commissioner Fairclough, that we're closer to something than, than where we've been. Hopefully, we're closer to it than however many years back, but, okay. Ms. Amanda, go ahead. You can go to the next item.
Yes, ma'am. So the next item is for, again, back in June, HDR was selected for Water Resources Study. This initial phase of the study is actually for the preliminary engineering report for Graves Creek. It will be a detailed engineering report that will include environmental statement, environmental studies. Again, this is for Phase One for the schools, and the funding for this is coming from the Capital Investment Fund for Graves Creek, $325,000. And we are recommending that this action, approval of this contract, be placed on the September 18th Board of Commissioners' agenda and the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District Governing Board as a consent item. The contract has been audited and determined to be legally sufficient.
Thank you. Any questions? I will entertain a motion at this time.
Move to approve the service agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated of the Carolinas in the amount of $325,000, and authorize the chairwoman to execute the attached contract that has been audited and determined to be legally sufficient.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Fairclough, Commissioner Council, Commissioner Adams, and Commissioner Keaton. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Stewart.
Next item?
Okay, so the next item is a resolution for Norcrest, Northern Cumberland Regional Sanitary Water and Sewer District, for a grant application. Previously, a resolution was approved for some infrastructure improvements in the Norcrest District. We are pursuing some funding through USDA for those improvements, but we recognize that with the growth anticipated in this corridor because of I-95 widening, because of access between Fort Liberty and the Triangle, we recognize that we need to do a comprehensive master plan for sewer evaluation, sewer study for this corridor. And we are proposing this resolution so that we can apply for a grant in the fall round to do this master study.
Okay. Any questions? I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve and put it on the consent item for September 18th.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, the next resolution is for landfill leachate treatment for a PFOS grant application. In the fall, we are applying for a grant for removal of PFOS from landfill leachate that is ultimately treated at PWC's Cross Creek Plant. We have asked for this resolution in the past. We have applied in the past and have not been successful. Landfill leachate is a challenge when we're competing with other wastewater needs, but we feel like with the revised scoring to prioritize emerging contaminants, that we have a good shot for this funding round, so we are asking to put in another application.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move and approve the landfill resolution on the September 8, 2023 Board of Commissioners' regular meeting.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Item K.
So Item K is a request for proposals for property acquisition services. So this RFP was for natural resources projects that could include well lots, it could include solid waste container site selection, and it also could include any, anything associated with those capital projects with the landfill as well. And so we went out... And so we went out for this solicitation and received two responses. One response was from ProSource in Texas. The other response was from the RightofWay Group, which is local. We scored the groups based on a number of factors and in the end, we felt like the RightofWay Group, with their knowledge of the local real estate market and their competitive pricing, would be the best fit for this response and we're recommending their selection and we will come back to the board at a later date with a contract.
Good, okay. Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I recommend that we accept the solution. Selection of the RightofWay Group LLC is a preferred choice for the property acquisition services and also the grant permission to enter negotiations, a detailed scope of work, cost of services, and prepare a contract for approval as the Board of Commissioners' meeting can be put on the agenda for September 18th, 2023.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Amanda.
Thank you.
Manager Greer, membership to Local Chamber of Commerce.
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Recently, we were invited by the Sandhills Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Sandhills Chamber of Commerce and the Hope Mills Chamber of Commerce to.
Mr. Manager, we can't see that. I can't.
I got it. I got it. To join their Chamber of Commerce and they both sent us invoices. The Sandhills, Greater Sandhills Chamber of Commerce recommended, well, wanted us to join for a fee of $3,500. Hope Mills, fee was $550. Reached out to the Greater Sandhills Chamber of Commerce, trying to get them. Haven't hit any communication with them since we put this on the agenda item. Commissioner Fairclough wanted to find out what we paid for other dues, other commissioner dues. You see up on the screen, the United, the UNC School of Government, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, North Carolina Association of Counties, NACO, National Association of County, Black County Officials, North Carolina Association of Clerks, Greater Fayetteville Chamber of Commerce, we paid $5,000. North Carolina Association of Black County Officials, $200. The League of Municipalities, $200, $2,500. And the National Organization of Black County Officials, $200. Total being approximately $94,000. And we wanted to see what your recommendation would be as far as paying Number One, Hope Mills, which is the lowest at $550, joining their membership and then trying to negotiate with the Greater Sandhills Chamber of Commerce at a lower reduced rate. Currently, they recommend or they want us to join for $3,500.
A person?
As a group.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Keith.
And thank you. I appreciate Commissioner Fairclough actually bringing this up earlier. And I had asked, many of these are nonprofits. I mean, they're 501(c)(6)'s, but they're nonprofits. They're the membership organization. And before we get all wrapped up on what is fair and what is this, I think we need to look at purpose. I mean, that's what our responsibility is as commissioners on funding. And when we fund nonprofits, it is because we believe that they can do a job at a better level than we can as accounting. That's sort of the mantra that governments use for nonprofits. I wasn't able to go to the Valor Awards, but I know that the Greater Fayetteville Chamber did that and it was well, well attended. I did hear Commissioner Chairman Stewart, Chairwoman Stewart, sorry, at the, at the state of the community, very well attended. And there's a big difference between fair and equitable. I had always heard that the Greater Fayetteville Chamber was a, was an all encompassing area chamber. I'll go back many years before, when the Spring Lake had a chamber and we gave them some money and the chamber never really even did anything with it. Do you know what the membership of the Sandhills Chamber is as opposed to Greater Fayetteville? $3,500 is a big ask for, and I'd be surprised if they had other entities paying that much.
Approximately, I don't know what they pay, but approximately 60 members in there.
Sixty. I think our, I think the Chamber of the Greater Fayetteville is 600 or something. And, you know, we have to look at purpose. Just because they say chamber doesn't mean they qualify for community money. We are a county agency, not a, you know. I'm kinda questioning why we're in the League of Municipalities first.
Yeah, me too.
That was my question, but.
I've never gotten anything from them.
You know, we're a county agency and if there's one, if somebody has an economic development group in Wade or Stedman or Falcon, you know, are we gonna actually fund them just because they say economic development on their piece two? We have an economic development. Those are my comments.
Commissioner Jones?
It's my understanding that the Greater Sandhills area of their chamber is going to be merging somehow with Hope Mills. At least that's what I was informed of when I went to one of the ribbon cuttings at Elwood and they had both the president of the Sandhills, the Greater Chamber, and Spring Lake, and then also the president of the Chamber. And Hope Mills, my understanding, they're gonna be doing some type of merge, joining together. So I would like to find out more information about that. And I know that it might not be a large area, but because I am, I'd like to participate if possible to support some of those for myself and Marshall since we do have, that's some of our territory here out there. It's fully, it's large. I just wanna keep that in mind. They might not have a lot of members right now, but that's not really, my concern is not the amount of members because if they're, you know, they have growth too. It's not really about how many members you have. So I just wanna be conscious minded of that. But if I could find more information on that, but it is my understanding that the two presidents, they plan on doing some kind of partnership or merging. So I don't know if that's gonna increase the membership. That's just my take.
Commissioner Adams?
Madam Chair, and I did hear the manager say he tried to contact them and couldn't get them. I would move to table this till he gets that information based upon the comments by Commissioner Jones that we seek out that further information and bring it back and we table this matter until then.
Before we do that, can I ask a question about our membership in the Greater Fayetteville Chamber of Commerce? To bring y'all back on some history, back in 2012, I was chairman and Jay Martin was county manager and it seemed like every other department of county government had a membership from the Chamber of Commerce. You know, so we, commissioners looked at it, we talked about it and we said, okay, we need one, Cumberland County will have one membership in Chamber of Commerce. Chamber of Commerce didn't like that, but that's what we did. And what I want to know is who gets the information from the Chamber of Commerce? I'm not get, as a commissioner, I'm not getting it. I ain't getting it all.
Yes, I get it every day.
I get it.
Two and three times a day.
I guess I'm just not on their list. Now, I'm on there as a private member, but I have my own.
That comes as.
I have my own membership for the last two years.
Well, you should be getting it.
I'm glad to break that up because remember, Marshall, I actually asked Marshall, are we all Chamber members? Because I'm not receiving anything anyway. So I appreciate, you know, we discussed this at the POW. I said, are we Chamber members? Because I haven't gotten anything either.
Well, I guess we should be.
What are we, you know?
They just had to put us on there.
Apparently not.
Anyway, I just requested that.
So we can request that we be adding them listening.
Yeah, put us on there. If everybody else is getting it, we're just not because we're new, I guess. Anyway, because I'm gonna cancel my individual membership, you know.
Is that, is that, is that all?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we will go ahead and table this matter until.
Well, I was just gonna ask if we could, is there a purpose for us being in the League of Municipalities?
Yeah. But that's a separate.
Well, if we're gonna, we're gonna table this or table just?
Mine was just the chamber.
Okay, okay.
And then you can have a question on the League of Municipalities. Mine was just the chamber so you could get that information and bring it back.
I just had to ask many questions this time. I wanna get them all at once.
Can you second my move?
Yeah, I have a second.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, it's my.
It's been motion and second to go ahead and approve all.
No, just to table.
To table the chamber dues until the manager comes back with further information.
And I'll bring back information on the League of Municipalities also.
Oh, we were just gonna get rid of him today, but anyway.
Curiously, who's in contact with the League of Municipalities? Anybody?
We did work with the League of Municipalities to do some training, for ethics training for the mayor's coalition. So I'm not sure, I was just going to find out if this was that charge that they charged us because we did coordinate that training or if this was truly due. So I don't know the answer right now, but we did do ethics training for the mayor's coalition and I coordinated that.
Thank you, Sally.
And do they have other trainings as well throughout the year? Do they have other trainings?
The municipal, yes, just like the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners does training, the League does trainings for municipalities. The reason we went to them for the ethics training because the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners were not doing ethics training at that time, they have since started doing the training and providing that to, on the road, like the League did.
And if possible, I mean, I know I'm new, but I would like to see what other things they do because sometimes some of these memberships are, you know, beneficial to those that might wanna take some of these trainings off. I would like to see what they have to offer before. I mean, sometimes things are good. It's just a matter of who wants to take advantage of it or not. So if we can find out some information about that, please.
Thank you.
No, we didn't do a vote. It's moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Table.
Yes.
Table.
Oh. Unanimous.
For Item M, we have a bid award for the Crown Coliseum Elevator Modernization and Jermaine Walker, Director of Engineering Infrastructure, will provide an overview of this item and answer any questions that you may have.
Good afternoon, once again, Commissioners. This project was originally solicited by June 1st. Period closed on June 28th. We had to resolicet mid-August and CMC Building Incorporated submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bid of $522,000. This scope includes replacement of the elevator cab, cabling, and controls. This project will take approximately 270 days from the issue of the notice to proceed. And this project's fully funded through 2024 reappropriation and we're just requesting that the board accept this, approve this bid award and move it forward to the September 18th Board of Commissioners' agenda.
Where's the funding coming for this?
Through the Crown's capital investment.
So that is coming from their separate tax that they get for the capital investment. Okay.
Any other questions?
Let's do a brief.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor? Thank you. We'll move on to.
Unanimous.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was unanimous.
Okay, I got excited about this next one. I'm ready.
We all ready, Madam Chair. We all ready.
Item E.
Item E, let's hit it.
Architect selection for the Cumberland County Homeless Support Center.
It don't matter.
Jermaine Walker will present this item also.
Wait, I gotta get some things.
Any questions, motion, ready?
So this project was solicited June, excuse me, July 10th and it went out as a request for qualifications for professional services for programming, design services, construction administration for the Cumberland County Homeless Support Center. The period closed July 27th. We received three high-quality responses and those responses were from LS3P, Little Diversified, and the Wooten Company. And each firm was evaluated on a rubric based upon their understanding of the project, their team approach, qualifications of the personnel, relevant projects, and then their references. And so as you can see, based upon the tally, LS3P received the highest score of 131.5 out of 150 and we're bringing this to you for a recommendation for approval. And we also included within your package some of the slides from LS3P's presentation. If I can present those before you. And so with this firm, it's one of North Carolina's oldest firms with 60-plus years of operating in the area, especially in the southeast. As you can see, they have a number of support centers and their focus really is on multifamily projects. And the particular office that submitted the RFQ responses out of the Wilmington office. And so.
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
Just on the evaluation criteria.
Yes, sir.
Why we don't have anything on here about hub participation or anything? I don't see any of that. I looked at all the documents. Why is that not, even on the other ones, I should have raised it on the other ones, but.
So the hub participation for the county, the goal is 15% and with LS3P almost.
It wasn't in the evaluation criteria. It's 2020, 2030, 2040, 2020. That's not one of the evaluation criteria. So if you don't, how do I know that you need it if it's not in that evaluation criteria? I mean, why is it not in the evaluation criteria?
Well, it's a part of their submission. That was part of the RFQ response.
We'll make sure that we put it in, we delineate it separately. It was part of the RFQ response, but in the future, we'll make sure we separate that out. The firm that actually came, that was re-recommended second, was a MWBE hub certified firm.
And it's just, I wouldn't know that. I mean, they might have had that submission, but even with that though, would it not be a part of the criteria?
Yes.
I mean, if you're gonna evaluate in terms of scoring people, if somebody does, meets the 15 and somebody has zero, that ought to be a part of the criteria.
Yes, sir.
I mean.
That makes sense. You're saying they should get credit for the scoring in that?
I mean, if we're gonna do a criteria, if that's part of the RFQ and everything else, then it ought to be, and that's one of our goals, is to have that at 15%. You gotta score them on it and not to score them on it, you know. So that, and so I got you, management.
What we'll do is we'll break it out and part it, and show it as part of the, if you all approve moving forward, we'll bring it forward and have it part of the meeting on Monday.
Well, it don't have to be, I mean, whatever you get, I mean, I'm not pushing that. But I guess my next question would be, who determines the evaluation criteria? I mean, that was, I saw the, let me see, I saw the list. Which makes sense to me. But as you do, you know, I guess it's just, everybody's the exact same criteria on everybody.
Yes.
And so if we can include that in that criteria, I mean, it's gonna change your point scores or whatever. But you don't have to bring it Monday. I mean, as long as we start looking at that, I'm not gonna make, you gotta get a whole lot of other stuff. So it's not, it's not gonna change anything on this for what I do today, but I just think it's something we ought to review. So, thank you.
But one thing I can say for LS3P, based upon their submission, their firm is almost 67% MWBE.
See, I would have known that, see.
And we'll make sure we break this.
Thank you.
So during their submission, the one thing that they focused on was the experience of the client. And so the focus was not that the facility would look institutional. And so they wanted to humanize the project. And so a lot of the things that they focused on, treating the clients with honor and dignity, presenting a place that's educational, and then also focusing on a place that was, that provided healing and safety for the clients. And LS3P came across as deeply involved in the process. They have extensive experience. They have extensive experience in programming and design, instruction of community-centered projects. They specialize in homeless and affordable housing projects. That's their niche in that area. And then they designed similar homeless support centers, organizations in the southeast, such as Charleston Housing Authority, Passage Home in Raleigh, the Critton New Residential Center in Charlotte, and Hope Center in Eden Village. And so, just to reiterate some of those key components, their approach to nurturing and healing, they also presented an integrated shelter mode, which we'll model, then we'll talk about in a couple of slides, and then also just their strategies and focus on healing. And so, they wanted to have a connection to the place for the clients. They wanted to normalize the approach, so when the clients came in, it doesn't look like, as is stated earlier, an institution. And they wanted the clients, when they come in, to be comfortable. They wanted them to have access, and they wanted to create a separate wedding area. And then also, with the connection to nature, some of the clients, they're not ready for large gatherings, and so, if they need some time to get away, if they're experiencing sensory overload, then they're able to get out and take a breath, decompress, and come back in. And this was unique to their presentation. They brought in a model because they understand that you're going to have to separate single persons from families, single families. And then also, this was also unique, pure living rooms, because we don't always understand someone else's plight, but the people that are there, they understand each other. And so, they're able to get away, have small breakout rooms, be a support one to another, and then as we continue to help them matriculate through the process, this was another good point. And then also, access, wanted to be able to come in, set a point of entry, and that's for the client, that's for safety. Tracking, sir. And then wayfinding, just to be able to get through, not making it confusing, because the people there are already experiencing enough stressors in their life. And so, we're just asking that the board approve the selection, and then allow us to move forward with a scope refinement and contract.
I am impressed.
I am very impressed. I only have one disappointment, and that is that I wasn't in this meeting, and I wish that I would have been in there so I could have asked them questions, but I am True, very true.
If I can add one thing?
Yes.
I think you're going to add it, which is the project manager, the project architect for this, actually grew up with a single mother, homeless. And so, he had a very, very unique perspective on
This is definitely someone, and I just figured that they had experience in building homeless shelter, but you could tell that this is somebody who, somebody with some hands-on experience, and so, that tells me why it is that certain details are in there.
Commissioner Jones, did you have a question?
Yes, I was going to say that if possible, I'd like to see if we can maybe arrange a tour at one of their other locations, since you said they have one in Charlotte and Raleigh, just to get a feel of, if possible, just a suggestion. I would like to personally try to do something like that.
Yes, ma'am.
Did they design it, or was it theirs? You got to talk
They designed it.
Yes, so you're going to have to talk to the people.
We'd have to talk to the owners of the facility.
Whatever needs to be done to make that happen.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any questions?
I move the selection of LS3P as the preferred choice to provide professional services for programming, design services, and construction administration for the Cumberland County Homeless Support Center, and grant staff permission to enter contract negotiation for pre-construction services, which will be presented to the board. For approval, once the contract passes, financial audit and legal sufficiency will be placed on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, actually, let me, let me change that a little bit, because I think the presentation that Mr. Walker did, people ought to see, so I would add it as an item of business, and they can see that, what we saw, because we just put it on the consent agenda, they won't see it. So, I'll do all of that and just take off the consent agenda part and put it on the as items. No, you can't do it, you just got to vote on it, so it needs to be an item of business.
And I will amend my statement.
So, it's, the vote has been a, the motion has been amended and seconded properly, and so, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Great presentation. Absolutely great. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you guys. Thank you so much. Any other items of business? Manager Greer, okay, we have already read, hopefully, everybody has seen their monthly reports. Manager Greer, so on that, we will, any questions on any of the monthly reports? There being none, I will call on a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed call, possession test.
Is there a second?
14331818.
Is there a second? It's been motion and properly seconded to go into closed session. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
I can get a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
It's been motion and adjourned and properly seconded. All those in favor?
Unanimous.